Okay, there we go.
Okay, let me, all right, good evening, I'm gonna call the Rules and Procedure Committee meeting to order at 5:31. Our roll call is Counselor Kessiri, Bruce Jones, and myself. Myself, Juliet Parker, and there are two attendees online. Representative Ian Thomas and Counselor Edward Jacob. So as I do at every meeting we have for Rules and Procedures, I will let everyone know we're only doing the three allowed to talk at this meeting because we're a working group. And I do not have an open floor format because I do not want to violate any FOI rules. So if we have any more than five counselors, it is the majority of the council. And with that, we can proceed to the first agenda item. And I'm gonna ask for approval of September 28, 2022, and October 3, 2022, special meeting minutes.
Second, Jones.
So I made the motion, and Bruce Jones, are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three, zero, zero. Okay, now we're on to new business. And the first agenda item is 2023-368 Counselor Communication Time Limit. And we have some background information. We received this referral. Currently, Counselor, well, the issue is Counselor Communication limited to three-minute time limit. We'll be discussing this referral that we received on March 29 from Council Frankel to set a three-minute time limit when speaking under Counsel Communication. So, thoughts? Anyone?
I think my thought on this is that it's completely adequate amount of time to express what Counselor Communication, what I understand Counselor Communication to be, which is basically just sort of mentioning what you did in the past week or two, and then any sort of special events that you went to. So it's a very, it's supposed to be, from my understanding, a very clean and cut and dry kind of list of the things that you did. I think you can fit that into three minutes.
Okay. Kessiri?
Thank you, Chair Parker. So also, part of communications is actually talking about what we received from the public, right? In my opinion, we shouldn't be taking more time than we are actually doing town business for, to be reporting about our communications. So I will agree with Counselor Jones and say that three minutes, I think, is super adequate in order to get in all the emails and the things that we did and any kind of information we want to relay to the public.
Thank you. Well, considering our rules do state for town council meetings that it is a three-minute time limit. It should apply. I don't think we need a, personally, I don't think we need another rule, we just need to ask the mayor to enforce that rule. I don't know your thoughts.
Did we have a, did we have a place, I'm just looking, I have the, the council rules open in front of me here, I'm just looking at where the three-minute section is.
Well, technically, it's under debate and decorum. Please don't misquote that, Juliet, do that, misquote that. At council meetings, counselors are limited to two turns on each question. Do we, if that's the case, then they can take time under calendar of communication, which would be under our agenda setting of the Order of Business of Agenda. Do we need to state under Rule 7 on page 3?
Open sentence.
Yeah, Rule 7, Section 7. Yep. Rule 7A7. Do we need to?
Would it be seven, would it be eight? Eight.
No.
Eight, eight, Communication Reports and Liaisons.
Oh, definitely, well, still, no, because that's committee reports are different.
Okay.
Communications Report and Liaison is number 7.
Okay.
Do we need a rule there to say, or say, refer to?
I'm just looking where we had the three minutes.
It says, page 5. Rule 8D, number 4.
Council meeting, Counselors are limited to two turns, each is any question, they may not speak a second time, although all counselors have the opportunity to speak, the same limit applied to discussion on each amendment. Really asking a simple, quick question or making a brief suggestion is not counted. Could you add a sentence in there or something that said Counselor comments should also be limited to one three-minute turn?
Oh, the calendar of Communications, for Communications under sections.
Yeah, under D, number, number 4. Would you do that?
But that section is for debate and decorum in debate.
Correct.
Debate. So is there a section about Communications?
No, not under that section. The only place that we have anything about Communications in Rule 7.
Counselor Parker, look, look on number 7. B, Notes to, in order of, to Order of Business. Number 3, those speaking under Communication Reports, other than, we have five minutes there. We just change it to three minutes?
Oh, that's true, I forgot about that one, yeah, we could, if that's the rule of our. So those begin to, yes, oh, that's actually an error.
What is that section?
So that is.
Page 4.
Yeah.
Page 4. Under B, Notes to Order of Business. And that actually should say 7, so that's a clerical error right there.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, so we just change that to 3?
We can, if there's a motion on the floor for it.
I'll move that we change page 4 of the rules, oop, sorry, I just did something to my thing. Section B, subsection 2, from 5 minutes to 3 minutes.
I will.
All right, I'm gonna repeat it.
Did that, I have a question then.
Okay. All right. The motion is to move that we change Section B 2 from 5 minutes to 3 minutes.
Yeah.
I second that motion.
Is that correct? Is that what?
Yep.
Well, I.
You did, so this got.
I have two questions, it's currently marked as number 3. Should that be changed to number 2?
Yes, that's why I say it's a clerical error.
Okay, so that should be number 2, and then the second question is, those speaking under Roman numeral 8, Communications and Reports, is that the correct number?
You know what? Seven, eight, nine, committee, committee reports are different. So, wait a minute, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, no, that's correct, Communications is under 7. Committee reports are something different.
What copy are you looking at for the rules? Because I'm actually online, and it's listed under our rules on the website, and it does have that section as Section 2.
Oh.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the copy I got was, did not have that correct one.
Okay, so maybe.
Yeah, so they probably did correct it.
Okay, because it is listed as subsection 2 on the website.
It says V2, right?
Yeah, mine looks like this.
Hold on.
Juliet, is this how yours looks?
No, that changed. No, the current rules are on, okay?
Yeah, it's E Bravo 2 on the website.
On the website, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's correct on the website, so we just want to change. All right, so just to clarify, because I want to make it clear that we will be changing, the motion is to change. I'm gonna change it a little bit.
Sure.
Motion that we move to change under Rule 7, Section B 2, to have changed 5 minutes to 3 minutes, only because I want to be clear that we're changing the correct section, if anybody asks.
Okay.
Are we okay with me stating it that way? Rule 7.
Yep.
Just Rule 7, Section B.
Oh, I see.
2, or Roman numerals 2, from 5 minutes. I'm just adding the rule where it is under our section. Is that okay with everyone, or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you just repeat that one more time for me? I'm sorry.
Somebody who that? Your motion is to move that we change Section B 2 from 5 minutes to 3 minutes.
Yes.
But I want to add words, Rule 7, B, Rule 7, Section B 2.
Yes, yes.
So that we're clear on our rules.
Okay, yeah, that's fine with me.
And if I look at, on the previous page, page 3, on my copy, Section 7 is Communication Reports and Liaison Reports, other than committee reports, and it's Town Counselors, Clerk, Clerk, so we fall under the Town Council, right, under A.
Correct. Yes.
That's where we, that's where we're following, so.
Yes, Rule 7. So we have a motion on the floor, I meant, I amended the motion, I didn't get a second.
I second it.
Just, just a small minor change. So, all in favor?
Aye.
My?
Aye.
No, no, and no extension, so that passes with that change, so I will make note of that in our minutes and send that copy to Ms. Hilton. I'm sorry.
So thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, all right, so that one's 3, 0, 0. Okay. Agenda item is 2, 0, 2, 3, 3, 6, 9, rule change for budget meetings. And that, oop, wrong page, sorry, let me go back to the packet. The referral came. I'll do the background. They would like a rule change on the 33rd Town Council Rules. The background is the Town Council Rules and Procedure Committee will be discussing a May 3, 2023 referral from Counsel Frankel to allow the mayor, the authority, to adjust, change the rules for budget meetings. Thoughts, discussion? Because there's no motion on the floor.
Okay. So my thought is that should be in the purview of the mayor to make changes that he, he or she, they, or they feel is necessary to make for an efficient budget process. And just as an example, I thought this year, it worked really well, the way we were handling the budget, it moved smoothly and quickly, and efficiently, and gave us sufficient time to speak, and so I thought how we did it this year worked really well, but, but there may be a different rule at different times for different, at different places, so we shouldn't just say that what we did this year was the one and only way, we need to leave that to be the mayor, to whoever's the mayor, to make that decision, to find the best process for the budget.
Because Counselor Kessiri?
Yeah, I can agree with that, I think that process is complicated, and depending on what the council looks like, because it may not, I mean, this obviously is not going to apply for our council anymore, because, you know, it could be a new council next time, so I just think that the mayor should be able to make that as easy as he wants it to be, or as, you know, every budget process is different, so should be in the purview of the mayor.
Okay. So since when we had COVID, we all went to Zoom and did it on, online in one day? And please don't quote me on this, it may have been that we had to suspend the rules to do it, but if we have it within our rules, then I think this will be easier format the mayor to say, we need to change it to this, to be, as Counsel Jones said, to be more efficient in time.
Right.
Because we're also.
We, we have been, all of us have been through two different ways of doing, three different ways of doing the budget. We've done the 12-hour day, we've done the way we did it this year, and we did it the way we did it last year, so we've done three different ways with different mayors doing different things, so each one has worked.
Each one has worked, and be very consistent if we have some consistency in that process, so. Anyone have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion to, and I would put it on page 9. This would go in section Rule 10. 9, section M, I think is the place to put it, and the line would be, rules would be suspended, and the mayor would decide the process for the budget. So, let's see, to put it in here. The Cow has one budget meeting. I think we'll go, and I can put it wherever we want, the Cow has one budget meeting which consists of several sessions, comma, rules would be suspended, and the mayor would decide the process for the budget, period. Each session recesses in a time, to a time definite.
All right, say that again, please.
So.
I got the first line, is the rules would be suspended.
Rules would be suspended, and the mayor would decide the process for the budget. So the sentence, the Cow has one budget meeting which consists of several sessions, comma, rules would be suspended, and the mayor would decide the process for the budget, period. Each session recessed, and the rest of it's the same, just stays.
Okay.
So moved.
Second, Kessiri.
Okay.
So that's in Rule 10, and then it would be subsection M as in Mike, right?
Correct.
Yep, yep. Is would the correct word there? Rules would be suspended?
Depends the language of the rest of it. Well, it's in present tense, so it says each session recesses to a time definite, the meeting is adjourned at the end of the final session. Now, well, then it goes into.
Other stuff.
Yeah, rules are suspended? No, rules.
Sometimes it uses the may and the shall.
Rules may be suspended, and the mayor can decide the process for the budget.
I think that's smoother.
May, rules may be suspended, and the mayor can decide the process for the budget.
Yep, I think so. Chair Parker, do you think that?
Oh, I think we lost her for a second, she's coming back in.
Okay.
Someone have to let me in.
Oh, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Can. Yeah, sorry about that, I don't know what happened, my internet went down for a minute, so I apologize for that.
Okay, you're the host, because it showed that you're hosting.
Yes, we're still recording, so good.
Everything looks.
Well, I'm gonna make note that meeting. Well, you guys were still on though, right?
Yeah, we just actually changed some words around, so.
Okay.
We didn't know you were gone.
Yes, okay, so, wait a minute, you have a new motion, who made a new motion?
Well, we're just kind of talking about it right now, but we'll amend it in a minute if you agree. Rules may be suspended, and the mayor can decide the process for the budget.
Oh, okay, rules may be suspended, and the mayor can decide the process for the budget, actually, I like it.
Okay, all right, so I will make that amendment.
Okay.
And now second it.
You're seconding, okay. Yeah, it's smoother, it's a little more, I think it's a little, yeah, it's smoother.
Fits with the tense of the paragraph as well.
Of the paragraph, okay.
Right.
Okay.
So with the new amendment, are we all in favor with the word changes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, we did well, all right, we're on a roll here. So we are going on to the very last one, which is number 3, which is to, item number 2023-363 Youth Awards and Recognitions. So the background, Rules and Procedure Committee will be discussing an April 4 referral from Council Board lawn to establish a schedule for approving proclamations celebrating youth achievements with an emphasis on sports. So I'll read her referral. Seeking support to make an agenda item for the Town Council to work with the Board of Education and the Athletic Director to make it policy and standard practice that proclamation be awarded to any competitive youth team athletic, I think it was supposed to be athletic or otherwise.
Could be, yes, probably.
And achieves any level of chairmanship in their respective season, whether it be divisional, state, regional, or national. All counselors have been BCC'd on this email, please send your support, opposition, or neutrality to the manager. So I believe we all received, I'm not sure, I think all councils received an email today regarding proclamations from the Town Clerk's Office. From yes, this is from the assistant Town Clerk, Marie Ms. Sideback, Zidbeck, I apologize if I mispronounced her name. So.
Did we lose her?
Chair Parker. Chair Parker, we can't hear you. So we'll wait and see if we get her back.
Our specific guidelines that have come.
Chair Parker, you're back, you were gone.
Yeah, you were gone. Are you there?
She's still the host, we're still recording, she's connecting audio.
Yeah.
Okay, I think you're back.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm here, I apologize, again, let me restate my so I said we received communication from the Town Clerk's Office regarding proclamation request guidelines and procedure, so. Proclamations of ceremonial nature and provided by the Town of Groton is a service to Town of Groton residents, employers, and employees with the goal of honoring and celebrating events and increasing awareness of noteworthy issues among citizens. These public service documents are strictly honorary and not legally binding. Issuance of a proclamation does not necessarily constitute an endorsement by the Town of Groton Government. So it states that requests for proclamations must be in writing to the Town Clerk's Office at least 10 days, 10 business days prior to the date with the, when the proclamation is needed. Proclamations are reviewed on a case-by-case to ensure they are here to appropriate for consistency and to ensure equity. The mayor will only issue a proclamation that complies with established guidelines. They will only issue one for town residents or events, retirement proclamations. Person must have been employed with current employer for 25 years or more, birthday proclamations. Person must be at least 75 years of age. Any proclamation request from, for a town board, commission, or committee member must be approved in advance by the Clerk's Office. Any proclamation request for the town employee must be approved in advance by the department head or town manager. Annual or other repeat request must be made in writing for each occasion in accordance with these guidelines. Proclamations are not automatically renewed. So we have specific guidelines, and I, I don't think, I think we have to follow what the Town Clerk has just said. And I personally, I believe this needs to be in the Board of Ed's hands, I've spoken to the Board of Ed, and they feel that this is their purview and not ours, and also, the request was for a significant, a good academic award. If we're gonna be should be, if we're gonna do it for one, we would do it for the other, and it can't be just one, one group that we've, can you hear me?
You're cutting it out, we got the gist.
Is that better?
Yep.
Yes.
Or is it my internet?
No, it's.
You were better.
All right, so I have to talk, the thing. So I feel we are gonna do something like this, I don't know if you guys are in agreement, I'm just talking.
It's definitely.
If we're gonna do something like, it's definitely my internet?
Yeah, you got roboty there for a second.
Did she disappear again?
All right, this, you, who say?
So.
Do I need to?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
You can hear me?
Yes.
So I, I also agree with you, and I also had, I put into the guidelines that is set by the town that's very specific, and then. That's very specific, and then also, I also had conversations with Board of Ed members who expressed that they want to be able to award their own students. In their own, under their own Board of Ed, um, cover, so I think we can just probably forward this over to the Board of Ed, and they can. Honor their own, uh, athletics and academic achievements, I believe.
Um. Counselor Casiri?
Yes, so, um, thank you, uh. Disclosing, I'm an employee of Gotten Public Schools, um, and we're talking about Board of Ed stuff, so I just wanted to disclose that, um. I agree with you both that, I mean, we received today very, very specific guidelines about, um. Awarding proclamations, and also a little concerned. Um, not only because of. That verbiage, you know, that it's very particular on what we should be awarding proclamations for, but Counsel Board along's referral is actually. Vague, in a way that. He's also talking about. Competitive youth teams, athletic or otherwise, that achieves any level of championship. I mean, we could be applying this to some of our youth leagues that are not even associated with the schools. This could get very. Convoluted, if we're, you know, based on this language, where, I mean, we've got youth lacrosse teams, we have youth. Uh, soccer teams, baseball, softball, and then like the middle school teams, I mean, this would be like proclamations. Constantly. Uh, so I, I am also in favor of just, if, if Board of Ed wants to be able to do their own thing, then that makes sense to me. But I worry with the, the vagueness of how this is written, that we could be. Issuing out thirty proclamations every meeting, so.
Well, the other thing is, the town clerk makes the decision with the mayor, so. And they have very specific guidelines on how to do this, so I. I'm making a motion to refer this to the Board of Ed.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
I will be abstaining, uh, since I am a employee of Gotten Public Schools, so. Just for the record.
Okay, uh, extension.
Two, zero, two, zero, one.
Two, zero, one. So. That's all we have for this evening, I will type up the minutes and put the changes in that we suggested, um. This will not go, I believe we just moved this to the council, please don't quote me on that, because is that what we had to do last time?
I'm looking, Council Communication.
It takes a month to do.
Right. Next, Council meeting.
Jan six, I believe.
Yeah. We.
Yes.
We have, so, we may want to move it to July, just because not all of us will be here. But that's the mayor's, mayor can figure that out.
So this. Potential, the, the changes will be not on till the ju, first June meeting, Tuesday meeting, and you, I'm sorry, you said June.
June six is when that meeting is.
Okay. I think. We, we did okay. And, no other concerns, because I do not have other business on my agenda. On our agenda, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And all favor.
I.
I, thank you guys.
Thank you for a lovely meeting.
All right, have a nice night.
Bye.